Welcome to our May 20th, 2025 Angels Camp City Council Meeting. We did go to closed session. No action was taken and we will return to closed session after this meeting on those three items. So again, welcome. We will have two public hearings again during this meeting. And just as a reminder, I will present the item. Staff will discuss the item. Council will have an opportunity to ask questions. And then at that point, I'll open up the public hearing for any public to make a comment. Once all of that has been exhausted, it'll be brought back to us for discussion, deliberation, and if action warrants, we will take action. So again, welcome. Rose, roll call.
Mayor Schamante.
Present.
Vice Mayor Scherrato.
Aye.
Councilmember Monkata.
Present.
Councilmember Brolio.
Present.
Councilmember Beehill.
Here.
Staff is present.
Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Again, I did report on the closed session. I'll do it again. We had three items. There was no action was taken and we will return to closed session after our regular meeting. So next item, item six, approval that the agenda is posted. Pam, any changes or additions?
No changes.
Hearing, any changes from our community? No. Anyone online? Rose?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Rose?
Beehill.
Aye.
Scherrato.
Aye.
Schamante.
Aye.
Monkata.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda. That is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. If with any public present or online like to make a public comment, please state your name. We're going to do Amy first and then you.
Amy Augustine. Just wanted to mention that tomorrow at the park, starting at 8:00 a.m., the Calabars County Garden Club will be doing landscaping. Who's turning on your microphone? Anybody who would like to help and volunteer is very welcome to weed and help plant tomorrow. And also on the 31st is our grand opening at the park. And we also could use some volunteers in the kitchen. Other than that, park open. It's been very crowded. Ninety percent of the people have stayed off the grass. And we're looking forward to the grand opening. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish?
Patricia, sorry. Patricia Hawkins, Angels Camp. I just wanted to say, since it's not on the agenda today, Amy and the update of Utica Park. My neighbor has six children, young to older, 13 to two. And every day she's been taking them to the park. She's been looking at the shading, checking the temperature before the children go on some things. She's extremely happy. The children are so excited once it's home from school on the older ones, homework. Any online classes finished. So she sometimes leaves the house at 6:00. And she goes and she's been there at different times. She lets them play. She approved her older ones, the 13 and 10s, to go to the park by themselves and come home. She told them at the first time, no, I have to check it. I have to see that it's safe and then it's okay for you. Once she did that, she said to them when they asked to go, she said, yes, and we'll be home at a... She tells them when. So she's allowing her older ones to use the park on their own. They love it. They shoot baskets. They ride their bikes on the trail. They really into the playground. They're not so much. They're more the equipment for workout that you have, the trail, the hoops. And like someone said, Amy said, we'll have to teach them how to play guachi. But as far as I'm concerned, she's a mom who lets her children explore. Her younger one who's afraid of heights. I was with her. I've gone to the park with them. And I was with her and he wanted to climb that tall structure everyone was so afraid of. And he started and she said to me, he's afraid of heights. So she was worried he'd get scared if he got himself too high and didn't know what to do. He climbed that ladder, which was higher than his really bench. And he looked down at me and he was like, Tricia, look at me. And I was like, look, you're bigger, you're taller than me. And he was the smile on his face and the joy. And then he crossed that bridge over. And he had to, the very first time, work his way through that rope structure. And he went down, but he was at the top, at the midway at least, when you cross that bridge. And he was so excited. He went down that slide and I was there at the bottom. I had to keep following it. I don't know how many times. He did that. And the younger ones on the horse that rocks, on the smaller slides, climbing. And I mean, it's just, it was, it just, it filled my heart. And the softness of the ground is not, I didn't expect it. The minute I walked on it, I was like, whoa, wait a minute. There's not going to be broken bones on this. And so I have to admit, I did, I did ask my concerns and I voiced them to council and Amy many, many times, as you know. When I heard parents talking about the shading while I was there, I'd answer their question. The council wants to look at a season of the sun and moving and the natural shading before they decide what actually needs shading itself to be made. And the tallest structure can't be shaded unless it's an engineered project, which they know and it will be expensive. Who knows down the road, they may be able to do it or not. We don't know. But as soon as I told them what the city was thinking, that you're wanting to look at a season because there's summer, winter, fall, spring. And the sun moves, so shading moves. And they understood it and it's like, okay, that makes sense. And then there was no more discussion of why haven't they shaded? The only one thing I did, and I called Amy. There wasn't trash cans, so little kids obviously were jumping it, dropping it all around. But Amy explained then, when I called her, that because of the new grass, the cans couldn't have... It was an afterthought. And because of the new grass, they weren't moved there, which is perfectly fine. They'll get there when they need it, when they can, and then they'll be fine. But other than that, I'm just, when I actually got into it and saw it and watched the children use it, you guys, Amy, all of you, you just hit a home run.
Thank you.
I mean, you basically, you hit a four-bagger. You just, it's, you know, there's just maybe tiny issues, but you've already got them in mind. You're going to try and take care of them when you can. But as far as I'm concerned, you've done it. And I'm really proud. I want you to know that I have voiced and I've had concerns and you've listened. And yeah, I just want everyone to know. You've done it.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
I didn't hear out of the park.
Is there any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Hi, Veronica Matilde, Angels Camp. In regards to the park, I will say that I drive by every day and I see children playing morning and evening. Also, the courts are being used by adults and kids alike, which is really nice to see all throughout the day. In regards to the bathrooms, in support of our city maintenance, I was talking at the pancake breakfast on Saturday with a guy that was cleaning up. And I asked, are people being respectful? Trying to put it in a nice way. And he just looked at me and said, I wish. So I don't know what the city can do. I know there's always legalities of everything, but if there's any way that we could maybe... I had some designated, I did time again, I don't even know. If there's any way to lock those bathrooms up so these poor people who work for our city don't have to deal with basically hazmat situations. I mean, that's, yeah. Because it's, everything's great, except for there's always that. So anyway, the park's loved and used.
Thank you.
Good job. Let's help our city employees.
Thank you. Anyone else? For public comment? Anyone online, Rose? Okay, hearing done, so we'll move on to item number eight. Our annual update for the City of Angels. Joel General Matt, Joel Metzger, our general manager of Utica Water and Power Authority. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council. I'm Joel Metzger. I'm general manager of the Utica Water and Power Authority. And for those who don't know what Utica is, we are the joint powers authority that the city is part of. And it's our responsibility to convey water from High Country down through the foothills and to your water treatment plant. And we also hold water rights on behalf of the city. And we operate two hydroelectric powerhouses, which generate revenue that subsidize the operation of the water system. So I'm going to run through really two major updates this evening. One is an update on our draft budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And the other is an update on the FERC exemption and license surrender application process, which we are about two and a half years into. And we're very close to a major milestone, which is submitting the final applications to Washington DC. So with that, Rose, if you could have the next slide. So Utica has a system that was built about 170 years ago. And so it's antiquated, it's historic, and we operate 25 wooden flumes along with about 27 miles of concrete line canals. We also hold seven water rights. And that's what allows us to divert water off the Stanislaus River and other creeks and rivers. And the two powerhouses that we operate, one in Murfreeses and one in Angels. Next slide. So if that might be interested, for the city to know, how much water do you use of the about 33,000 acre feet that we bring down to help? So about 1,120 acre feet are used by the city. You have a contract with us for up to 3,600 acre feet. So in terms of the future supply for growth, you're in a really good position. And we have an abundant amount of water to provide to you. Greenhorn Creek also uses water out of the creek that comes from Utica's system. And that can range widely depending on their needs. Next slide. So here's a map that shows the places of diversion and water rights that we hold. So you can see that the water that we use starts way up in the, starts way up in the high mountains, Alpine, Utica, Union, and Spicer Reservoir. And then it runs down the Stanislaus River.
Turn that speaker away because I think the speaker...
Number eight.
It's only these two that are working. That one and that one.
Turn number eight down, Rose.
All right, let's try it.
Okay. Try and try testing.
Bring it up.
Testing.
No. The light went off, Sam, so it might be the battery. Just go ahead and try and speak a little.
No, your light's on.
No, you still have the battery.
Oh, okay. There you go.
You're back. Fair enough. Okay. So these are the water rights that we hold. And you can see they range from the Stanislaus River all the way down to the Avery area, down to Angels Camp, and all the way down to the French Volche area between Angels and Murfreeses. Next slide. Anybody know what this dam is? Karen? You've been there.
I was just there, McKay's.
So this is McKay's Dam and Reservoir. And this is out Love Creek Road. For those who haven't been there, this is the main point of diversion that brings Stanislaus River water off of the main river into a tunnel. And that tunnel goes about nine miles to the Colerville Powerhouse. But along the way, Utica has a vertical shaft of about 300 feet. We tap that tunnel and we bring it to the surface and then we put it into our above-ground conveyance system. So this is a very, very key piece of infrastructure, not just for Utica and for the city, but also for Calabars County Water District, which has customers all the way up to Camp Connell along Highway 4. Next slide. All right. So hopefully you have a handout in front of you. One is the five-year agreement that we will talk about. But the other one I want to refer to is this one right here. This is how much hydropower revenue we can generate based on what we call the water year. And there are six water year types. And so I wanted to share with you tonight is how the water year is determined. So Department of Water Resources, or DWR, makes a prediction of how much rain and snow will flow down to Goodwin Reservoir in a given year between April and July. And Goodwin is kind of a third dam in a row. So there's New Maloney's, and then that spills into Tullock, and then Tullock spills down into Goodwin. And Goodwin is where they make this prediction. So this is a picture of Goodwin down below Tullock. And depending on what their prediction is, in our case, we need 510,000 acre feet or more to be in a normal to wet year. If we get that, that's a water year one. So that's the left column here. And you can see that we should generate about $1.8 million in hydro revenue when a water year one. Now, if we have a drought year and we get less water that's predicted to come down, you can see that it goes to water year two, three, four, five, and six. And you can see our revenue can drop from 1.8 million all the way down to 617,000. So it's a substantial and volatile revenue source. But when we do have good water years, it does a lot to subsidize the maintenance and operations of the water system. And so I just want to make sure the council knows that one of the reasons why we wanted to make an agreement for funding from the city and from UUD is to smooth out this volatility. Because we never really know what we're going to get. And so we tried to shoot for the middle. And then in good years, we will put money away, make sure our reserves are good. And in bad years, we will use those reserves and we won't come back asking for more. So that was the purpose of that five-year agreement. And we'll talk more about that in a minute. Next slide. And I'm proud to report that we just confirmed that it is a water year one for this coming year. And we were as close as we could get to being in a water year two while still staying in a one. If they ticked it down by one more 10,000 acre foot increment, we would have lost $220,000 just like that. All right.
Excuse me. That's anticipated revenue, right, Joel? I mean, it's not guaranteed, right? Or is it guaranteed revenue?
Sorry.
So that's a good point, Mr. Mayor. If we had an unanticipated outage and we did just have an unanticipated outage, we can lose hundreds of thousands of dollars pretty quickly. So yes, it's not guaranteed. But as long as we are running, because our contract price with PG&E is fixed, we know exactly how much we'll make. So we're not playing the market the way most hydro powerhouses are. So this is just showing this graphically, water year six on top. You can see how much we divert, it's about 15,000 acre feet, all the way down to one, up to 33,000 acre feet. Excellent. All right. So let's talk budget. That is your vice mayor there standing with Assembly Member Congi Pud, who is our representative in Sacramento. He went out and walked the...
That's crazy.
...flume. And let's just say it made an impression on him.
Oh, yeah.
Next slide. All right. So we developed a draft budget at the staff level. We look at all of the expenses for the current year. We project how much we're going to spend. We end up with some carryover that's projected. We looked at the next year. We mainly look at reserve contributions, capital improvement projects, and operations. And then we go line by line. And you know, we probably have 60 or 80 line items that we're looking at. And we see where we're short. And then in some cases, we'll go to the budget committee with a deficit and we'll work with them to close that gap. Last year, that was the approach we took. And Mike, thank you for grinding through a four-hour meeting with us to get to a balanced budget. We went a little differently this year and staff actually made the cuts and brought a balanced budget to budget committee. And it was reviewed, I think, maybe 45 minutes or so. So as of today, I looked at it again. There have been changes since our last meeting, which was last month. But we are still at a balanced budget. And the major cuts that we made and presented in draft form are still going to have to be there. But I think we're in a pretty darn good position to bring a balanced budget for adoption to the Utica Board next month. Generally, we would bring that in May because we always had to adopt a budget to then give the council time to review that and then adopt there for the next month in June before the end of the fiscal year. But because we have the five-year plan, there wasn't a reason to make early. So we're taking as much time as we can to refine our numbers. So we're going to meet again in June and then we're planning to bring the final draft of the budget to the board at the end of June. Next slide. Just a little bit about this other handout that you have. That's this one right here. So this is the product of a lot of work and collaboration between Union Public Utility District, Utica, and the city council. And what we did is we did a detailed financial analysis. We looked at the next five years of expenses. And we took a conservative kind of middle-of-the-rev approach on what the revenues would be. And then we projected out our capital needs, our reserves, and our operating costs. And we developed a contribution from both the council and UUD that would, we could count on and that the council and UUD could count on. And that kind of eliminates the need to negotiate every year, you know, for months on end to try to figure out what it's going to be. And so I'm very proud of the work that we did on this. I'm proud that we cut it down substantially because what we initially were hoping for just wasn't feasible for our community. It was too much of a burden. And so we ended up cutting this down as low as we could. And you know, one thing I'll just point out is in the middle, you'll see some red text and it says remaining budget shortfall. So given our predictions, we are still having to make substantial cuts to balance our budget, even with the contribution shown on this plan. And so for '25, '26, which is what we're looking at for this coming year, we are still looking at a shortfall of 662,000. And that's throwing a $500,000 reserve at it and cutting CIP and cutting reserves. Now, this whole model is based on basically a water year 2.5 between two and three. We're in a one. So our revenue is better than what you see here. So that cuts into that 662. It allows me not to have to spend my $500,000 reserve. But we still had to cut about $400,000 or $500,000 out of this budget to balance it. And we were able to maintain that reserve. So I'm not recommending putting more into reserves for that budget balancing reserve because we have about 500 there. So if we hit a water year four or five next year, we'd spend that reserve. Then we wouldn't come back asking for more. Next slide. This is just a picture of that. And this coming year, the contribution per this plan is 814,000 total. That's 407,000 from the council, 407 from UUD. Next slide. All right. So I think we talked about the purpose of this. Let's go to the next slide. A little bit more about the development. I guess I would just remind everyone, things can change. Just like that PG&E outage, I did not expect that we would be down for an entire month and, you know, lose over $100,000 in revenue. So as we get closer to June 30th, my certainty is higher. But I still kind of make sure people know that, you know, we're not, we're not done until we get through the end. Next slide. All right. So I just want to hit a couple highlights of the budget, just to kind of keep you updated on what we're doing. So the main capital improvement projects that we are planning for fiscal year '25, '26, starting July 1, we are putting money away for a backup transformer for the Murfreeses Powerhouse. The purpose of that is we have one transformer at that powerhouse. If it were to fail, and they do fail, and this one's getting old, we would be looking at over a year lead time to order the new transformer. And since that's our main revenue source, it's best practice to have a backup transformer that's in place, ready to go, so you can swap them out quickly, keep making money while you send your broken one out to get refurbished. And then that becomes your backup transformer. So this has been a goal of ours for a long time to try to get this in place. It's probably a $300,000 purchase. We initially had 150 in to put aside, and this has been cut down again to try to balance the budget. We also have $100,000 to replace the Murfreeses Powerhouse static exciter. That's a key component of the Murfreeses Powerhouse, which needs to be replaced. And then we have the Murfreeses Four Bay trash rake installation. This is the, we've already purchased that trash rake, and this is the installation cost. And we're doing this in-house, which cuts costs down substantially compared to hiring an outside contractor. Excellent. For O&amp;M, we have about $103,000 set aside for wooden flume maintenance. That's ripping out old flume that is leaking and failing. And Kyle Raspason is here. He's our water conveyance supervisor. He leads the team that keeps the flumes in good order. And so he and his team, with some temporary labor, worked during the month of November. That's our maintenance outage, to just get as much done as they can from light until dark. In some cases, seven days a week, because it's such a limited time when we turn that system off. And then we're also doing a aggressive concrete line canal maintenance. We generally spend $30,000, but we got a Watersmart grant. And so we were able to double up. So we had a 50% of that covered by the United States Bureau of Reclamation. And so that is going to be two or three times more than we normally would do.
Joel, how many miles are shock created now?
Oh, man. The system's 27. Flumes are probably like maybe a mile, a little over. What do you think for the canal?
Well, all of the canal is shock created.
Oh, it is?
If it's old.
If it's done, that's just dirt.
Oh, okay. Or just dirt.
Yeah. We try to prioritize on the bad sections that are leaking when we do that.
Okay. So it's all there?
It's all aligned.
And do you have a sense of like the mileage on that? Or... We can circle back.
No, it's fine. I'm just, I was just curious.
Yeah.
You answered my question.
Next slide, please. All right. So we have a reserves policy that the Utica Board passed. It calls for a $400,000 contribution to the FERC relicensing reserve. And the reason that we're still saving for relicensing is in the event that the exemption fails. We want to make sure that we're equipped to have the option to relicense. Not that we would make that decision, but the goal was to have enough in there to get that done. And so we're continuing to save for that. But what we're doing is we're working toward the exemption, which is a much better alternative than relicensing. And a lot of that work is actually the same. And so whatever money we spend on the exemption would transfer over into a relicensing process. So that reserve is being cut down by $100,000 again in order to balance our budget this year. Operating reserve getting $30,000.
What is the cost of the exemption versus licensing?
So our top-end estimate for relicensing was up to $10 million, worst-case scenario. And the exemption, we've spent a million and change so far. And I am hoping that we're going to keep it under $2 million, hopefully well under $2 million. But there's so many things that could change and that we could be asked to do between now and the end of this. It's difficult to know. The relicensing, I'm hoping if we go that route, would be less than that $10 million as well. That was a worst-case scenario that was predicted like five years ago.
And will it have an effect on the operating budget if we are successful with the exemption?
If we are successful with the exemption, it will have a substantial impact across the board. Namely, we wouldn't have to relicensure. So whatever the millions would be, we wouldn't have to do that. We would also wouldn't have to continue saving for that reserve. That would go away completely. So that could either be returned to our partners or it could be repurposed to other things like CIP or dam safety. But beyond that, I mean, 30 to 40% of my time is just complying with FERC sometimes during the busy times. And the reports that they ask us to do, in some cases, are $200,000 to $300,000 for dam safety and things of that nature. Since we're co-regulated by the state, which is Division of Safety of Dams, they are not asking for nearly that level of engineering, report writing, and compliance. And so our cost across the board for our system and regulatory compliance, all of that will come down. So the exemption, you know, I think I've said this on the video. It's the single most impactful thing we could do to reduce costs at Utica. Thank you. And then you can see some of these other reserves are putting money aside for the reports that I just mentioned that FERC requires us to do. There's one called a Part 12 inspection. It's an every-five-year report. That's due in a year. And I'm going to try to defer that and try to get a decision on the exemption because it would no longer be required. That's expected to be north of $300,000 if we have to do that Part 12 inspection. Next slide, please. FERC is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And that's the federal agency that gives you a license if you generate any kind of power, whether it's nuclear, natural gas, coal, hydro, wind, solar. You need a license from them unless you have an exemption. Okay. So what do we do to balance this budget? And this is where staff cuts. So we brought these to the budget committee already made. We cut the FERC reserve by $100,000. Murfreeses Powerhouse Transformer went down by 60. We deferred a relay upgrade for the Murfreeses Powerhouse, which was initially in at $150. We're going to do that next year. We cut out the purchase of a additional operations water conveyance truck. And we made, you know, a half dozen, well, dozens of other cuts that were smaller. And I just made some more cuts today as we got some new numbers. And I just made some more cuts today as we got some new numbers. So we're continuing to keep that at zero, and we'll bring the updated recommendations back to the budget committee.
Joel, I have a question. Seems to be a conflict between, between this cutting the Murphy's Powerhouse transformer versus the other slide was get a backup transformer. And you're adding for the backup and you're cutting for the, continue playing that?
This is the backup transformer. This, it just, it doesn't have backup in there. So it's the same thing. So we initially had 150 and we cut it down by about half. So we took 60,000 off. We're still going to save for it, but we're not going to put the full 150 in this budget.
So this is a reserve or is a set aside for, it's not actually buying?
That is going to be half of the purchase price.
Two years.
Yeah.
Okay. So when, because my, a question's going through my head too, is, is it smart to do a lot of capital improvement plans on the powerhouses before we get the FERC exemption?
Yeah. I think that's a valid question. I think that our goal is unless we decide differently, and I believe this is going to be the case, the exemption has a high likelihood of going through. We want to be good stewards of our system and stay proactive and not reactive. I don't think we should go rewind to powerhouses. I don't know that we need to replace the entire Angels Penstock before we have that. But when it comes to some of these smaller items, I think that it makes sense to continue with the plan that we've approved and with the CIP that, that we've approved.
Because there would be a cost to decommission.
Oh, yeah.
If we, I mean, so the, if, if we don't get FERC, you know, that's going to be a whole nother discussion. But to shut a powerhouse down is not going to be, I can just turn the key off.
Do we know how, do we have a study that, so do we know how much it costs to decommission a plant?
So five years ago, when we had this looked at by an outside consultant, they estimated that if we were made to actually remove those powerhouses and bring them back to kind of a natural condition, try to restore the, the stream and the pond that they were on, that it would be substantially more expensive than either relicensing or an exemption. Now, if we were able to negotiate some way to not have to remove all of that and kind of abandon them in place, that would be a different cost. But what we looked at was the decommissioning would likely be more expensive than relicensing or exemption. And so the board at the time, this is five years ago, looked at every option available to us, weighed the pros and cons, and made the decision that of all of those, the best course of action was to pursue the exemption. If that succeeded, it makes a lot of sense to keep these powerhouses going. If it failed, we got to come back as a team and look at what makes sense. But I certainly agree with you. We are trying to not spend a ton of money or take out 30-year debt on things right now until we have that answer to that most important question, which is, does the commission grant the exemption?
They explained, I was just saying, five years ago or so, we met and looked at all these options and then found that if we can get out of the exemption, if we can get the exemption would create the help.
Yeah, exemption seems to be a no brainer. I'm just saying, what ifs?
Right. And the what ifs, there were multiple what ifs. If we could sell, ah, all sorts of, somebody else could run. There was all sorts of what ifs.
Yeah. Next slide, please. All right. So budget committee agreed to our recommendation at our last meeting. Budget committee doesn't make the decision, they just make a recommendation. So they want to come back, and we're going to come back to them in June. And then they will make a recommendation to the full Utica Board. And if that is approved and adopted, we will have a budget set in place for the next fiscal year. We're expecting to take that vote on June 24th. Next slide. All right. So before we move to FERC exemption update, are there questions about the budget, the process, the funding, anything?
My only question, Joel, is we are, we're not anywhere near using our allocation of water, and that's good to know that there is some growth there. So what happens to that water? I mean, is it just kind of go downstream? Do we try to sell that? Do you try to sell that additional water? What, what happens?
Or will the state try to come get it?
I'm always, I always am concerned about making sure we're protecting our water rights. I do think because a lot of our priority dates are like 1853, that we're better positioned than some that have more junior water rights. But there's been legislation recently that has attacked those pre-1914 water rights. And so we have opposed that, and fortunately, we've been able to shut that down, working with our state partners. But in terms of where the water goes, it, it goes into New Maloney's Reservoir.
Okay.
And, and you know, if you look at 33,000 acre feet in water year one, and then you look at 1,100 for the city and 2,000 for UPUD, and yes, we have some environmental flows and we have some ag that we provide water to. But the, the majority of the water that we pull off the Stanislaus really just spins our turbines and goes back into Angels Creek and goes into Maloney's. And unfortunately, the way that the agreements were structured, Utica loses those water rights really once they leave the city's sphere of influence.
Oh, wow.
It's not even Maloney's. CCWD retakes those rights as soon as they really leave the city's area. And so it, honestly, I think, you know, Kyle told me this when I first started, the, the most profitable place to use water is downstream of our second powerhouse, which is an Angels camp, right across the creek here. And so if we could do more diversions like Greithorn Creek, which is a below both powerhouse diversion, we can make double the money and we can then sell that water. And so I think one thing, you know, as we're looking into the future for strategic planning, if there's any way to expand agriculture or development or any other high water use infrastructure downstream of, of right here would be a great place to do it. But I cannot sell water through Maloney's. I can't get it down to the valley. I can't get it to the delta. If I could, if we had negotiated storage rights in the Maloney's back when it was built, then I could probably sell water to Westlands, which is a very thirsty ag district on the west side of the Samminkin Valley. And we sell water for $25 an acre foot or $70 an acre foot to our ag folks, and Westlands will buy it for over $2,000 an acre foot when they're hurting. And so that would be a game changer for us. So I am looking into ways that we might be able to get water to some buyer down in the valley, not through the Maloney's system. There may be other options there. And we're trying to think outside of the box and be creative, but it, we're in a situation where it's very difficult for, to get our water to buyers outside of our immediate area, fortunately.
There's no conveyance though, correct? I mean, I mean, if we could tap into that in between those two powerhouses and ship water, there aren't, there's, is there a way to convey that water down to the valley though?
Only through existing streams and rivers. But if we wanted to invest in a pipeline, we're talking, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars to leave it down.
So they're really?
There's, yeah. I don't know if we've talked about different options, but I think FERC is still by far the, we have, well, there's, there's a timeline on FERC probably over the next couple of years, and then we can really concentrate on what's, if, if we get the exemption. Because if we don't get the exemption, it changes everything still. So if we get the exemption, then we can maybe look at some water conveyance and ways to, to help our money was.
The bottom line is we're, we're water rich and we're cash poor. That, that is our situation. And thank God for the powerhouses because at least we can generate enough to pay for themselves and subsidize the water system. But, you know, one of the things that I think about is if we took the powerhouses out of the equation, bringing in like 1.82 million dollars a year, and our budget's 3.6 million. Yes, you save a little bit by not operating in powerhouses, but it's not really that much because they aren't really that expensive unless you're doing big CIP. But they are generating a lot of revenue. If you take that away, we still have a 30-mile-long water conveyance system that Kyle's maintaining with all that concrete that needs to be repaired and all those flumes and all those five dams, seven dams and five reservoirs. And all of those costs would be borne by all of us in the community. We wouldn't have any revenue source other than a little ag water. And we sell like $45,000 worth of ag water. So instead of the Utica fee going down, if the powerhouses went away, the Utica fee would go up substantially. And so that's why for now, it makes sense logically to keep those things going, providing that, you know, we don't have to spend tens of millions of dollars, as long as it's just, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, and they keep going, and we care for them, orbit stewards, they're serving us well right now.
I have a question before we go on to the FERC. On the revenue side, in this, this form here, shows over $3 million in, well, I guess it was last year, and then about a million eight and change going forward. And you mentioned we're kind of, you're kind of staying in the middle range. You know, water year number one, a million eight is, is the most we can expect. So where, where's the extra maybe half million, but where's the extra revenue? What am I missing here?
So if you're looking at the Utica revenue for 24, 25, which is that 3.123 million, we were asked to not use the projected estimate of the water year 2.5, because by the time we got to actually bringing this to the joint meeting, we knew it was a water year one. And so we were asked to actually plug in the real numbers, not the kind of conservative estimate. So that's why you see that revenue so much higher, because that, that was the real numbers for that year. Moving forward for 25, 26, that's simply just looking at the projections, and that's a much lower, higher revenue than what we would have in a water year one. You know, that's quite a bit lower.
So 3.1 million was actual based on year one. We're just, we're in year one again, and this chart shows in year one, we can expect about a million eight in revenue. So where's, what's the million three?
The million, you got to grant that year for a million.
We're not, we're not, so 25, 26, we're not, we're not looking at a water year one. Even though we're in that, this is, this is a projection on a water year 2.5, which is substantially less revenue. Now, we are in a one, but we didn't know that when we made this last year.
Okay. So I'm confused. 2.5, you basically, according to this chart, revenue around 1.45 million. And on your estimate, you've got 1.8 million. So what's the, there's 400, what's the difference there?
So we have multiple revenue sources. We have lease revenue, we have ag water that we sell, we have fees, we have the contributions, we have the hydro revenues. All of that together adds up to what we put into the model. And Director Beal, if you would like, I would love to sit down and look at this with you line by line, but I think we probably want to spend more time on it. So I'm happy to do that with you. And I know our council has already done that, and we're happy to bring you in. I know you weren't there.
All right. Thank you.
Good. Next slide. All right. So we started the FERC exemption process about three years ago now. And after the board made the decision that, that this is what we're going to go for FERC exemption, we basically started doing research. I spent time talking to Washington DC staff. I spent time talking to the state, talking to tribes, talking to other people who've gone through it. And we ended up hiring a consulting team, STANTEC, and we worked closely with them to first, a couple of years ago, prepare what are called draft applications. And that was our notice that we were going to apply for this. We prepared two very detailed, very intense draft applications. We submitted those in December of 2024, or sorry, December 2023. We had a comment period, we had tours, we had a joint meeting. We got a ton of comments that came in in March of last year. And the thing about these exemptions is you have to open yourself up to any and all interested party, and they can ask you to do whatever they want you to do. That could be a recreational improvement, that could be an engineering study, that could be an infrastructure improvement, it could be changing your stream flows, it could be environmental studies, tribal folks could want additional cultural studies and monitoring done. And so we ended up getting about 30 comments. Many of those were in support of the exemption from a lot of agencies and organizations in county. But the biggest comments that impacted us and our ability to move forward were from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, or CDFW. They are concerned about how are we going to continue taking care of the environment when FERC is no longer overseeing us and we're not held to those FERC conditions, which is all federal. And so what we, what they asked us to do was study the fodalea-legged frog, which is endangered species, study the fish populations, the western pond turtle populations. The state water board also wrote a letter, and they wanted a substantial water quality study, which was a 12-month study of temperature. We also took grab samples for constituents in the water at low flow and high flow. And we also monitored turbidity, which is how much particulate matter is in the water before, during and after our maintenance outage. All of this trying to determine what impact do we have on the water quality by just operating our system and to try to fill data gaps for these agencies. So between the state water board, CDFW, also the state historic preservation office, or SHPO, they wanted us to do a field study to inventory all the cultural historic sites. So it was just an onslaught or barrage of study requests. We said no to some, we negotiated on others, and we said yes to the ones that we really just had to do. And I kept in close communication with DC because they're the ones who are going to determine whether we do or don't have to do a study. But they consistently said, the better you work, the better you play with the state, that more seamless our review and approval of this is going to be. So don't make enemies, you know, don't do things that are unreasonable, we'll try to work with them. And I'm really proud to say that our team has developed strong relationships with all of the state agencies, the tribes, both state and federal. Great relationship with the FERC staff in DC that have helped guide us through. Caroline and I traveled to DC and sat down with them for two hours, and we have a strong relationship. We know what we need to do, and they're supporting us, you know, within their neutral staff position, you know, they're trying to help us make sure we have everything in order. And so we have now spent almost a million dollars between putting the applications together, doing all these studies, all the consultation, all the meetings, all the tours that we've done. And now, after a very, very huge effort, that is the whole team, we are nearing the completion of everything that was asked of us, and we're going to be ready to put the final applications in. So the draft that was a year and a half ago is almost final. Our goal is early to mid-July to finalize this, and then we will file that with the Washington DC office. And then, once they review it and say, this looks good, we don't need anything else, we can transition from me leading this and my team to FERC leading it. And they're going to take this over, and they're going to review this thing for 18 to 24 months. That's what we were told. Best case scenario is 18 months, probably going to be two years. And, you know, that's things like, there's an EVA process, the National Environmental Policy Act, that they have a full year from when they say we're going to start this to when they have to finish it. And they generally take that whole year. So that right there is a year gone. And then they also have to review the whole application, they have to talk to all of the folks that we've talked to, the stakeholders, make sure everybody's good. They'll send us information requests, and we'll have to make sure that we're responsive to that. So it's not like we're done, but the big push ends in July.
So Joel, I think we can explain to the folks here and online the fact that if we were to build these power plants today?
They would be exempt from day one. So we had powerhouses and a system before FERC was even a thing. It wasn't even an organization. When it was created, they swept up all of the power generating facilities in the United States, and they licensed them all, small, big, medium. And so we were swept up under that. Not us, but, you know, the Utica Power Company and PG&E. And now they realize they don't have the staffing or financial ability to regulate all these thousands of, of facilities. So if we were going to decide, hey, we're going to build two hybrids, one's a 1.4 megawatt, one's a 3.6, and we're going to construct that right now as part of the construction approval, we would apply for an exemption and that would be granted, and we would never be under FERC. So that is a, a contradiction between what we are having to do and what a new project is.
And then will we incur any additional cost once you submit the application? Is there anything else that we have to do monetarily?
Yes. So concurrent with my submittal, I have to perform a CEQA assessment on this entire project and the impacts of it being surrendered. And I have to apply for a water, water quality certification, which is a 401 application. That's with the state water board. And so I have those both scoped, and the FERC committee, which is Caroline and the at-large member Gary Conrato, are going to look at those proposals Thursday, and we're going to make comments on those and hopefully cut them down a little bit. And then we're going to get those going to where as soon as we submit the final applications, we can launch that next step, because we can't do CEQA or 401 until our applications are submitted. And that's another maybe year, just working through those two things. Because the state gets a year to issue the 401 from the time that they accept a complete application. So it can be very frustrating, honestly, because of these long timelines and working with the big bureaucracy, but it's a game that we have to play to get through this, and we understand it. And my goal is to be as efficient as possible, to do things concurrently and have things ready before we can do it, so we're not wasting time. And that's what we've done well so far. Next slide. Just looking at kind of one of the tracking reports, if you ever are interested in seeing a one-page snapshot of the FERC exemption, we posted on our board agenda packet every month, and you'll see the spend so far, what we've spent it on, and what's coming up. Next slide. And two main things have to be completed before we can submit these. One was that water quality study, which I just heard was completed, will be sent to me this week. The other one was the field inventory of the historic people for resources, and our consultant SWCA completed those last week. So now I have about a 500-page report coming to me in draft form. Within two weeks, we'll review that, we're going to sit down and get tribal review on that, and then we'll send it to the state, which is SHPO, to review. We'll also send it to tribes, they get 30 days. And if I give it to them soon enough, that comes back right at the end of June, and then we can infuse that new information into the final applications and then submit them. But those are the things that could delay us back farther. If tribes have an issue with what we do and they feel like more monitoring or study is needed or more field visits, that could be revised and then another 30 days. So those are the things where it's kind of out of control. Next slide. We talked about water quality, next slide. Oh, and then in terms of the environmental measures that will continue, I have been in negotiations with a special FERC attorney and CDFW for about the past six months on what's called an MOA, memorandum of agreement. And what we're doing there is we are agreeing on what we're going to do to take care of the environment if the exemption is granted. And so we're looking at the entire system, all of the areas that will no longer be under FERC's jurisdiction. We are making a commitment to continue releasing water to those streams, monitoring for frogs and turtles, keeping the fish healthy, taking a look at water quality, animal crossings, I mean, the list goes on in obnoxious weeds, all the things that we do now and then some. But this is the forever version with no relicensing needed. So this will come to the board for approval, of course, and my goal is to keep the cost as low as possible while also being a good environmental steward. Next slide. All right, so we talked about submitting in July, and a couple more things we need to do, and then FERC will review, next slide. And we're looking at 18 to 24 months.
Wow.
And that is really when we will have either some really good news or a major decision point. And we're going to keep you updated throughout, through the members of Utica board, but I also am committed to coming here to give an update whenever the council would like that, but certainly at least once a year, like I am today. And we also hope to have a joint meeting at some point where we can get all of the JPA together and talk over these things and other things, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. And with that, that is what I have for you. I'm happy to take any additional questions that you may have.
Any council have any questions? My only question is, we've asked Pam to meet with our water partners, including you, to look at a redundant water source. You know, there's a tunnel tap idea, there's that, I know that Jessica's working on some grant to pull water out of, to get it, you know, let's say to three mile or two mile from...
Forest Meadows.
Forest, thank you, Forest Meadows. I'm not sure how we'd get the water once it got there. And I know that our staff has talked about a well. And I would appreciate if we could have those talks because that, anybody who's lived through the Darby Fire knows how frail our water system is, how fragile it is. It would be good for us to at least plan to get an addition, you know, a redundant water source to us, so.
Yeah, and the state is pushing that. The state wants every community to have a redundant water source, and I think we all should be looking at that and making sure that we're working toward that. And, you know, what that is, I think, you know, that's still some discussion to be had to figure out what makes sense, but I completely support redundancy. Because, I mean, honestly, the Darby Fire was horrific for this community for the 10 months that we didn't have our full water supply. And I believe it's our responsibilities, water managers, to try to avoid that from ever happening into our community. And if we have options, projects that we could do, to proactively put redundant backup sources in place, then we should be doing those. Absolutely.
And I don't know where we are with the MOU.
I've added on a future, or what are you talking about? Go ahead, what are you talking about?
Our agreement with this budget plan.
As soon as the 218, I've added on a future.
As soon as the 218.
I've added on a future, items to add.
And Joel, there were two stumbling blocks. One is when we were, you wanted the money, and I think that has been resolved, and I think you've been working with Pam. So it won't be all upfront, it'll be incrementally, because that's how we get the water. And the other one was, and you spoke about it during our 218 public hearing, that if in fact we had a water year six, you would do everything you can to sharpen your pencil before you came back to the council. And now it's the council's decision whether or not we're going to levy additional fees for that. So I appreciate that.
You bet. I mean, it's always our intent to do everything we can to be self-sufficient. Once we kind of have our inputs, we want to live within our means. And so we're going to work hard on that. And it would only be in an extreme desperate emergency that we would come back and ask for more. But I support language that says, there's no unilateral Utica saying, this is what you're going to pay us. No, it's, this is what we need and this is why, let's talk about it. The council always would have the authority, UPUD would always have that authority and decision power, and that's how this should be.
And has that MOU been changed to reflect that, those two items, you think?
I think that we are still waiting for comments from our other partner on that. And until we have that, we can't really sign because we wouldn't all have agreed on language. So that's the next step in that process.
And I want to publicly thank you because when I first came on council, I had a real problem with the way our budget was being produced. It was based on your expenses and then you'd kind of come and wrestle with the city and UPUD. And I'm all for not micromanaging. And now that you have a budget, you know, the expectation is that you guys will live within your budgets, like all of us have to. So I appreciate the work that you've done on that. And I know moving forward, we just need to strengthen our relationship. Because the thought of not having a water source or an eruption in the water source or where is it going to go? We were just at a LAFCO meeting, you know, and they, you know, they talk a lot about consolidation and things like that, and, you know, I don't think this is broken enough to be, I think, I don't, I appreciate what we do and the control that we have.
Many people in our region would absolutely die to have the kind of water resources that we have. I mean, look at Toomah County, they sold them all off to the highest bidder. They own almost no water rights, the NBD does. If they didn't have PG&E being willing to kind of give them some leftover hydro water from the Phoenix Powerhouse, they'd be out of luck. And so we are not in that position, we are in an enviable position. But unfortunately, we also have a historic system that's expensive. And so, yes, we have challenges, but I also think we need to take stock of the incredible opportunity we have. We are kind of in a position that most people in the state, which is absolutely tight.
You know what, and sometimes, I'm sorry, I don't need to be on a roll, but you know, I think...
You are though, it's okay.
It's okay. It's been a long day.
I'm going to German it wrong for a word.
You know, I think what we're doing now, I know for years, Utica's rates stayed the same. And for years, our water, wastewater rates stayed the same. And then all of a sudden, you come, you run up against the wall where you have to raise rates because you have a tremendous amount of CIP projects due or whatever. So, you know, I, and we never talk about that, but there's some history of why our rates are where they are today. And for years, you know, it stayed the same. And when things stay the same, things break. And then how do you fix them? And I know right now that the Board of Supervisors is kind of wrestling with our garbage, you know, especially for commercial customers, you know. So, you know, I appreciated what our council did years ago to get our rates where they were, and I appreciate our current council looking at our 218 and setting rates that is, that's going to allow us to maintain the system, because that's what you need to do. You have to, you have to be good stewards. And with that, your turn.
Oh, I will kind of echo, thanks. I will kind of echo what you said there too. And I just would like to say that I've been part of Utica for a little while, and the budget process has come, in my opinion, the budget process has come a long ways. Scott sat on there at one point, and I think we've all mentored and helped to get to the budget process we're at now, from previous city administrators to staff that's sitting here and everything else. So it's come a long ways, and it's really impressive to see the staff that, you know, completes some incredible projects, at a huge cost savings for us. So we've gone after grants, there's even grants that will retroactively pay back a few years maybe. So I think we've been really trying to move forward with being self-sufficient and saving money where we can, that type of thing. So thank you to all staff and everybody sitting here. That's all I got.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable. I really appreciate your, you know, talk about the redundant water supply, and I appreciate you saying that everyone should be looking into this. I don't think it's fair to task UWPA without a budget or a directive to find a redundant water source. So I think that's for, what, over 10 years or so, we've been saying, oh, we need this one, this, and nothing ever happens. I know a lot of us, because a lot of us expect Utica to come up with a solution, but there's no budget, there's no mandate, there's no direction, and so it's not really fair of us to put that on you. So I'm aware that, you know, we need to do a better job in sourcing that out, and I don't want for you to feel like it's all on your shoulders to get that done.
But I think he's one of the partners, and now it's a state mandate. And we have to include Joel because...
As a JPA, whatever we go with has to meet, you know, UPUD's needs equally. So it's, that's a tricky, you know, that's tricky to find a solution that's going to be equal to both. So independently, we should all be looking for different ideas and see what happens.
Hundred percent. And I think that that's why communication is so key and partnership is so key, and just making sure that we're all moving in the right direction. And yeah, whether that's the lower tunnel tap project, bypassing most of the flumes, whether it's taking a pipeline from Forest Meadows down to Catamachri Reservoir, whether it's coming down the Utica grade with other pipelines to the ag reservoirs. And then how would you get that to the city? Well, UPUD system gets to Six Mile Village, which is just right up the road, I mean, right by the gym there, that's UPUD water. So what is that, less than a mile, maybe, maybe a little more than a mile? You could bring it down. Your issue is your pipes are too small. So they could get water to you, but they probably have like a six or four inch main down there, and you probably would need something bigger. But there are ways to get CCWD water from hotter treatment plant in Avery to UPUD and all of their customers and to you. And man, if we can get FEMA to pay for that and bring it in there, and you just turn an emergency valve and you've got that water, why wouldn't we go after that? I mean, that makes a ton of sense. Or Director Beal, you mentioned wells. Maybe there's an incredible well site near your existing treatment plant or somewhere near the system. Yeah, we should be looking at that too. I absolutely think that relying on just the Utica system alone, that's not good for our community. But I also think that making sure that we are keeping the Utica system going, because that is the water that we have, and being good stewards has got to be our priority right now along with these investigations for, for other projects.
Thank you. Any other...
I was just going to say something about, so it's also about building resilience. And one of the things that you had mentioned is how much mastications happen. They've been really proactive about going after grants and getting a lot of mastication along the flumes. Some of the other things that we've talked about and why we host all of these, yeah, tours with other politicians, California politicians, and those that go back to DC is because we are trying to somehow get them to see that wooden flumes and replacing wooden flumes isn't exactly the best route all the time because it's, you know, it's wood, it breaks down, it's water. And how can, and if we have a fire and we lose all five flumes, how it happens? And so going back there and trying to really show pictures and tell them like, this isn't sustainable, and how can we get you to release us from that? Because I don't know if a lot of people understand that when the Darby Fire happened, we were mandated to build the wooden flume back to the way it was because of the, how old it was when it was built and things like that. So we couldn't put in, we couldn't do piping, you couldn't do a head start, you couldn't do anything like that because we were mandated to build a wooden flume again. So those are the other things that I feel like Utica glosses over, but it's also in the background, we're working towards changing the way that things are viewed at a federal level so that we're allowed to change that and be more resilient. So, does that make sense?
It does. Are there any public comments regarding this presentation? Hearing none? Ooh. Oraka?
Do you want to?
Want to come and ask?
I just, acronyms are not known by the public, so I appreciate when acronyms are spelled out. Pronounced, yeah.
Me too. I know. Thank you, Joel.
We appreciate your support and your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. All for taking. All right, moving on to our consent items. We have four. Item A, approved draft minutes of May 6, 2025. Item B, account payable, AP checks and Treasury, Treasurer's monthly report. Item C, approved resolution number 2526, acknowledging relocation of city property. Those are picnic tables. And item D, approved resolution 25-27, electing coverage under section 709 of the California Unemployment Insurance Code for all city employees. Is there any item that the council would like to pull? Hearing none, is there any item that the public would like to pull? Anyone online? Okay, having none, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Any other discussion?
Minkel?
Aye.
Serrado?
Aye.
Shmente?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Brolia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to our action items. Item A, reintroduce, waive the second reading by substitution of title, hold a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 544, updating the City of Angels Municipal Code, Chapter 15.20, flood plain management and flood damage prevention. Amy?
Mayor and council members, this is the second reading. I won't go into a huge amount of detail, just quick summary. This is a model ordinance based upon federal and state mandates. Obviously, we want to be able to make sure that we're regulating flood hazards in our city appropriately so that should somebody have damage, they will have no trouble with their insurance, et cetera, et cetera. We did include some provisions for setbacks from creeks based upon, again, state standards. And I don't really have anything else to add other than this is an update from 1996 so that we're current, with current law. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions from the council? Hearing none, we will open up the public hearing. Any comments from our public? Anyone online, Rose?
No.
Okay, so not hearing any comments from our public present or online, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. So we are looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 544.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the council, from the public, anyone online, hearing none, Rose?
Vihun?
Aye.
Serrado?
Aye.
Shmente?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Brolia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Reintroduce, waive the second reading by substitution of title, hold a public hearing and consider ordinance 545, amending Angels Municipal Code Section 17.09.120, adding a definition of large format retail. Revising Angels Camp Municipal Code Section 17.30.030 to allow, to allow large format retail in excess of 80,000 square feet as a conditional use in the shopping center commercial and CC zoning districts. And amending section 17.27.020 to a large, to allow large format retail establishments, all sizes, as a conditional use in a community commercial CC zoning district. Both amendments subject to the same large format retail requirements established in section 70.30.050. Amy?
Mayor and council members, again, this is second reading, so I'll keep it brief. As I mentioned before, this is an answer to our question of how can we get underwear and socks in the community? And when we checked with our developers, they said, if you can make it more flexible for large format retail, we'll see what we can do. And we also were asked for clarification at the last meeting, and that's on page 99 in the ordinance, basically to make it clear that in the shopping center commercial district, if you're 80,000 square feet, unless you're still a permitted use, it's only if you want to go over 80, that you would be a conditional use, and that it's always going to be a conditional use in community commercial. That said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open up the public hearing. But any member of the public present or online like to make a comment regarding this item? Hearing none, we'll bring it back to council for a motion.
So I want to, just thank...
Oh, you have a question?
No, I just want to thank Amy for making that distinction correct at the end. And I'll move on.
He closed.
There's been a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none?
Vihun?
Aye.
Serrado?
Aye.
Shmente?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Brolia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 10C, discuss and provide direction to the planning commission regarding allowing feathers, signs, and banners in the City of Angels camp.
Mayor and council members, this is one that based upon public input, we are bringing to you. We're asking you for direction as opposed to taking it to the planning commissions because this is not the first time that this issue has been raised, it's not the first time it's gone to the planning commission, and I want to make sure that the planning commission adequately addresses questions that you may have. That said, if we were to look at alternatives, I wanted to throw some out for your consideration. We could make feather flags over the counter, reduce the fee for them. They would remain temporary because again, when you have fabric flies flapping in the wind and you leave them up too long, they do deteriorate, they can become a hazard. We would like to have your recommendation that one per business be allowed, that they remain not allowed in residential. And I would strongly recommend that they not be allowed in the historic commercial district. That said, I'd be happy to answer any questions and whatever direction you give us. We have scheduled this item for June 12 at the Planning Commission to follow your recommendations.
What's temporary? What's it?
Thirty days. You can ask for extensions before that expires. And if you want to have more than one temporary, we would ask that you bring that to us all at once. In other words, if you want to have something at Easter or at Christmas, bring it to us at once. Same fee, we'll process them all at the same time. And there will be deadlines for when you have to take them down, when you can pick them up, that type of thing. And that's what it is currently or that's what you're talking about? No, that's based upon the, that is from what we've heard, I'm presenting those options to you. Right now, it's, they're supposed to be temporary, you pay the standard fee, they are not over the counter. You apply, we issue. Usually takes a week, week or so.
So I appreciate Amy you coming forward with some suggestions that you can share with the Planning Commission. Could we also get the Planning Commission to look at the political signs? And so if they're going to look at this ordinance, maybe clean the ordinance up a little bit? And then maybe have staff Pam look at fees? I know that to hang a sign in a historic district costs is more than in other areas. And then I like the idea of over the counter. The other thing, there's, there's very few references, but there is reference that a sign posted in the historic district has to go back to the Planning Commission, which kind of slows that process down. And as you and I talked, there is an ordinance regarding signage in an historic district. So I would hope that the, that the Planning Commission would consider allowing the planning director to approve those signs. And actually, wherever the reference is that it goes back to the commission, at least talk about whether or not the planning director can do that based on the guidelines established by them.
And I did want to add that we did do a revision within the last two years where we created a subcommittee so that you didn't have to wait a full month for the historic district signs. And we do have adopted design guidelines for signs in the historic district. Otherwise, I'd probably be sort of discouraging about that. But we can certainly bring that to the planning commission and say, hey, so long as you're following the adopted standards that you adopted, we could issue those in house and they could be appealed to the historic district. So that's an option.
Any other questions?
I've always not loved that we charge people in historic downtown more than anyone else in town for their sign permit. So I'd love to see if we can make it all one, one fee that's the same. And I'd love it to be the lower fee if possible because it doesn't make sense that our downtown businesses get strapped with having to pay twice as much. And just to explain that, used to require a public hearing and it still requires a committee meeting, which is not required in the rest of town. So if we were to follow the mayor's suggestion, that would get rid of that extra time, which is the reason for that extra charge. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I'm all for being business friendly, especially in the downtown area, so I would echo their sentiments. However, I'm not sure this is going quite far enough. And to me, when I address or see an issue that needs to be addressed, I want to clearly identify the problem. And I'd like some greater input from the business community to see if maybe there are other things that we could do to not piecemealing the ordinances to satisfy the business. So if there's a way to get input from, from DAC or ACBA or just the business community in general, and then, you know, give us some ideas, give us some thoughts, and then bring all that forward once with this as part of it, I think that that would serve us all better.
Pam and I, when we went with DAC, we asked them for their input. And I talked with Jesse about, you know, getting Angels Camp Business Association. I'm not sure if they have provided us any guidance. I, yeah, I, so, but we have asked.
Yeah, this is an opportunity for us to open it up.
Right, we have asked.
To invite input from the business community to say, hey, what do you, what can the city do for you to help your businesses? This is one idea we have, do you have any others? I'd love to see some ideas to, and do a more comprehensive change.
Limited to signs for this or do you want?
I think signs is one thing that might help, but is there something else? Is it something we always, we hear a lot of times complaints, I don't know, permits take too long. Sorry, Michael. You hear issues that the city, or the city's sign making business. I just want to know if there's anything else out there. So while we're looking at this, is there something else would you be looking at to be more comprehensive and helping the community?
Does that tie into what Pam is thinking about doing though with her outreach possibly to?
So that we've presented a draft business outreach survey with council as part of a item that I'm about to, staff is about to move forward with that next month or two. But that is the general idea is to basically reach out to businesses and to involve an opportunity to have a face-to-face conversation with the state business owners and to basically allow them to be able to share their experience as they open up their businesses, how they're doing, give us feedback or ideas, and how can we as a city be more helpful? Not just as opening the business, but also as they're continuing the business. Because what the city plans to do is to not only just attract businesses, but also retain businesses and to be able to capture ideas and how to promote jobs. And hopefully, like, you know, kickstart the, like, the continues, kickstarting the economic development, you can do that. And that's part of the process also. So signs is, in my past experiences, signs is a very, very hot button issue. Aside from that job training, resources. And they also use the outreach program as an avenue to let departments know, hey, you need to help us more on this aspect. So it's a proactive tool that the city is able to use to further help the business.
I understand that tied into what you, that bigger picture.
It would, and then, and then we can let people know that we are open for business, we're open to suggestions. And if we don't get a lot of input, the signage is part of it, but we can at least say, you know what, we asked.
Right.
You know, spend 90 days to figure it out or something and get it done.
Moving up on what you just said about the 90 days, if in your direction to staff, if we could include a time period. I don't want to delay the sign redo. Whereas our outreach for bigger programs may take a lot longer, so I don't want to slow it down. So if you could give us some.
And I know, Amy, in our discussions, one of the concerns is, is that with those flags, sometimes they'll blow off and it'll land in the highway. I don't know if we want to draft liability language that when they took the, when they take the sign out, they're going to be liable. I don't know if that's an issue or not, well, or, but I mean, it is a concern. As I understand it, one of those flags did land on someone's windshield. So, you know, do we, during, in the permit process, do we ask them to hold the city harmless if they post the flag?
On our general application, we do have a whole harmless. We do not usually include that on sign applications, but I guess we could consider that. Also, I wanted to add, we do also have to check with CHP and Caltrans. Those signs like this that might be along a highway, they have a whole other set of regs that we have to comply with.
So I appreciate you bringing some suggestions, and I think signage is a slippery slope because at some point then we could just be full of all these signs sort of everywhere. So I do appreciate moving those to over the counter and one per business, but I don't want no residential and historic commercial. That's my stance on this. And I do think that advertising and letting people know that they can apply for that for multiple date or time periods at once would be really beneficial and helpful. But like I said, I don't want to see this in residential or in historic.
So.
I concur with that.
Yes.
So like for Little Shoes, Little Shoes can submit an application and then put the dates on which they're going to post their enrollment banners, correct?
So we would work with people who wanted to do multiple dates. And what we would talk to her about is if here's that she needs enrollment at school is letting out, coming in, there are some specific periods and that we would try to work with her to narrow down those dates.
You know, and Michelle, I don't know if we can just target our businesses because the other question I asked Amy is, you know, I've been in business for 25 years and, you know, I signed my, I've got my permit up, but, you know, something has changed or all of a sudden, you know, I want to do something. You know, I just wonder whether or not an update to our businesses are either in the mailer with the water bill or something. Because when Kev or Slumber was doing their 49th anniversary, when he drove by, he has one of those blow-up wooden things or whatever those guys were flopping around over there, and it came down. I mean, it did. I mean, it was, and I don't know. But I always, I just often wonder whether or not they've just forgotten, you know, what's allowed and not allowed. Any comments, any other comments from council? Comments from?
Public.
The public?
Sorry, guys.
Why are you apologizing?
Sorry. The Ferris killed my legs. Amy and Patricia Harden. The only problem I see is the church at Stealthy Park. Would like to use one of those type of flags. They came here when the issue started. They were one of the first ones that brought it to council. Why can they use it? And we told, they, we were told no, they're in a residential. Is there a way there can be an exception for a limited time and a nonprofit? The church is the one that brought it to council to start, and you're eliminating them right away. And I just feel that's, it's, they want, because their church is non-visible from the road, a lot of people don't know where it's at, and I think it's their food pantry they want it out for or on their service days. I know they don't want it up all the time. So is there a way that the council or planning can work with them, even though they're in a residential, so that they can use those flags too? They're the ones that brought it here, they're the ones that request that they'd like to be able to use it. That's all I have to say for that.
Anyone else in the public?
Hi, Veronica, Matildi, Angels Camp. Just so you know, actually, I do know that that church is not, it's at the entrance of residential, but that property is actually commercial, so.
I didn't know that.
So thank you, that was very kind of you. I also liked what Scott said in regards to reaching out to the businesses. I think temporary is definitely a thing that nothing should be up permanently because of course it can get damaged and ratty. Also, there was a concern in that temporary. And then, of course, there's annual events that a lot of businesses have. But also, I was thinking, there's businesses that might have sales, not on traditional sale weekends or whatever, you know, Memorial Day weekend. How do they do that, you know? And again, I, I agree, I think that all the signs should be very professional. There should be guidelines for, even, I guess, right now banners are supposed to be temporary, but a lot of businesses use banners as permanent signage, et cetera. There's a lot of input that I think is needed and I would hope that we could reach out to the business community and really push it. I know I will if, if that's what is decided. I will talk to every business person I can and get this moved forward because it is something that can benefit the city, which of course is businesses, which generates the tax dollars. So it's a good full circle. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Okay. So do we need a motion or just? Okay, I'm sorry.
Patricia, I just wanted to go on record and say that, and Amy, you can correct me on the date, but we did give the church permission for a signage and we also discounted their permit fee.
Oh, after that meeting?
No, this was, this was a couple of years ago.
Because they originally had to take it down one day.
It was for something else.
It was for a different sign.
Yeah.
A different location.
And then the other thing I'd like to suggest is if, because that church is in a residential area, that the church maybe ask the neighbors if they're okay with certain signs.
There's been complaints by the house.
I'm just, just going on record to say those things.
That's the complaint is what got them told to do it.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that lots of times in situations like that, if you, if you open a conversation with people, it might get you further and.
They try.
So, okay, I'm not going to argue.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying.
Thank you.
They try.
Just to clarify, we do allow temporary signs, but you have to apply so that we can make sure they go up at a certain time, down at a certain time. And, and we did talk to the church quite some time back about an off-site directional sign. We're still open to talking about a directional sign if that also helps. Yeah, like across the street, says church this way type thing. So, and I've talked to Veronica about doing multiple sign applications under one application and that type of thing. So we have made that offer.
Okay, thank you. So Amy, do you have enough direction? I think you.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Amy. We look forward to hearing what the Planning Commission has to say. Moving on to item D, continuation of agenda item from City Council regular meeting of May 6, 2025, Amendment Number One Task Order 20, Transportation Funding and City Project Engineering Fiscal Year 2425. And Aaron, our city engineer, is here.
If you're wearing my glasses or not. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So a couple of weeks ago, it was before you asked me for Amendment Task Order 20. As we got into it, there was quite a bit of confusion and decided to continue that and bring some clarifications. So in your package today is a clarification. And I think one of the primary clarifications is that previous amendment was written and didn't include costs to date. The original task order amendment was written on December 31st. By the time it churned through the process and it got before the council two weeks ago, it, there was accumulation of costs in there. That's why it looked like we could have a DDUK when essentially that's not the case. It's like, no, I need $10,000 to finish what I've, you know, the next two months. I was looking at the current costs, which were not reflected in previous amendments. So this amendment is corrected, it's a little cleaner, it doesn't do all the internal accounting between Dewberry, REY, and LUMAS. It just says, we, you know, we spent, we had a budget of $7,000, Dewberry spent this much, REY spent that much. I spent the rest of it and we need this much to finish it.
So one of my questions after your presentation, do you have any billable hours if we were to take Pickle Porch parking off the table?
Yes, that's, that has the city engineering services, that's the $10,000 to finish paying in June.
Right, but if we, because last time we, we talked about, do we really need to have that parking lot striked? And do we want to expend any more dollars? And then I started thinking after the meeting, have you incurred any costs up to that date? Or has that been included in the changers?
That's included in the changer, like the $10,000. So there's a conversation, I talked with previous city administrator, interim city administrator, Steve Williams. And we had discussions about this, we met up and we, we came up with a preliminary sketch that Chris and his team used to regrade that. So there was some cost associated with that, but that's not part of the $10,000 that was requested in this.
So you're current paid?
I'm current paid on, on that. So if you struck the Napa parking lot and the Pickle Porch parking lot and just went for the $10,000 for city, city engineering services, that would, we would behold, and we could reconsider the, those other two parking lots in the future.
Well, one of my concerns is, because I thought we needed to strike Napa, but, and I don't know where our budget is, Michelle, but it's not truly a shovel ready, but we're getting ready to do a shovel ready. And, you know, doing something out there to kind of take away that ice ore and, you know, do some grading or do something. I don't, it's probably not a bad idea. At least we being, at least we have a plan of what we want to do and it not only currently, but in the future. So you know, I'm open to the council considering spending that additional dollars to do something with the Napa parking lot.
I I don't know if we keep the Pickle Porch. Right now it's working.
Right.
The former Napa kind of ties into what could be left of the park. It's not going to do any, it's not going to get completed, but it then will be a job that's ready. And I don't know what it would, how it could work, whether it's CMAC or regional transportation funds or something, or even there's the emergency plan that just came up, the emergency evacuation plan. You know, I know that we've used that for PSPS. We've used that for cooling areas. I don't know if that could fit into because Sam's Way theoretically goes away. The Napa part, Napa becomes parking and then the the vacant lot we bought to the side, that would then be a two lane road that would access for fire department, emergency vehicles, PG&E and all that type of stuff, if I'm not mistaken.
In our main street plan.
And it's in our main street plan. So I'm fine with keeping that one. I'm good with keeping the 14, the 10 and the 14 and maybe scratching the Pickle Porch parking lot for right now. And as we come up to budget, which is only a few months away, we can look at that and see if we want to put that. Yeah, not very far. We may maybe put that back in. So there's my kind of two cents on it.
Girl line is nodding.
I just noted that, excuse me, last meeting, your ad needed engineering services for $20,000 and you were able to cut that in half. So you're sure we're good?
So, yeah, um, yes.
Okay.
That was, yeah. I've corrected reflecting the cost to date. After that meeting I went, I I read the cost and you scroll through there, you can see where it reported the I think it's $70, 50 cents left in the budget after the May 6 meeting. And so I just corrected everything to that point in time.
Okay.
At the last meeting, Alvin, you brought up that this was, these items were were loaded on by the board or by the council and approved in the past. Are we undoing something now by, are we putting it on hold or what are we doing?
I think I'm putting the Pickle Porch off hold until this new fiscal year.
We, yeah, we gave Steve direction to get a cost estimate for these three projects. As I understand it, and then he met with Erin to develop a budget and Steve was going to put it.
And the Pickle Porch parking lot there was also a piece of property we were able to purchase. And there was the old concrete slabs there. Either way, there was advertising there. There needed to be some cleanup at that time. So in the cleanup process, we said, why don't we look at? We gravelled it and we made a little dirt bank, but let's look at what it could do.
Okay, so we just asked for for bids. We didn't, we didn't, this is before my time, but we didn't approve any actions other than looking at costs.
No, other than to get that 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 concrete slab removed, clean it up, gravel it, and let's look at what we can do with that at that point. But it was given to to give us a cost estimate for sure on that. And and keep going.
Okay. And then so I'm in agreement with you then on on keeping that in there as long as we can the Napa property, as long as we can confirm that there are grant funds for city parking or for whatever we want to use it for. We haven't even, we haven't even defined the use yet. Do we, do we want to do any engineering on something? We haven't defined the use.
No, but Alvin brought up a good point. We were supposed to move the exit entrance of the park so that it's two-way. That's why we bought the two lots side by side. And so that was one of the things that, and also so that PG&E could use the parking area down at the park for the
Right. I'm not 100% sure what can be gone after, but I'm pretty sure there's, and I would look to Amy or staff and to see what would be out there because it we we have used it for PSPS. We have used it for emergency services. It is EV charging. So there there are some criteria that it checks off on on grants and I know we can go after. What they are, I'm not 100% sure.
I think maybe as part of our space need study or something, maybe we we decide what we want to do with that property before we engage an engineer to come up with something.
That could be, yeah, that's
I just didn't want to step on toes of, you know, past decisions. So no decision will be made. I think we should wait and see what we want to do before we spend money on engineering.
Amy, on the the park, the grant money, we have to, we have to do everything that was required in the grant for the park. And one of them was EV charger. Is that the EV charger that we designated at Napa or was there supposed to, we, I know we, we or is it the one that's in the park that we ran the cables for?
Okay, it's the one in the park that we ran cables for and Napa has always been identified as being a park construction when we bought it. It was to become a park.
I heard rumors of a two-story parking structure. I heard, I heard city vehicles. I heard electric.
City vehicles because you need to save up in order to get the EV grant that COG was going after.
Right, we went after a grant already.
Yeah, we went after a grant. And the reason two-tiered is because the land itself is two-tiered. You could park below and you could park on top.
Well, and I think if we, you know, put that road in, it would address your concern because cars wouldn't be going close to the playgrounds.
Okay, I think everybody misunderstood what I said. I was talking about people approaching an open public.
Well, I just said, I mean, I think so Erin, talk about what that scope would look like for the, when you looked at the Napa Auto Park. What would you do?
We were looking like two options. One was close Sam's Way. One was to do two-tiered parking. It was in conjunction with the previous EV charging grant that was out there, the the program of COG. So we're just trying to figure out what could be done with that. And this is a by no means is it plans, specs and estimates to put out. It's conceptual. Hey, do we like this? Do we like this? Hey, we like option number B and option B, not number B.
Either way.
Option, we'll take option B and this has got a cost of this much to it. And then now when we're looking for money, we've got a preliminary design. We've got a budget for a construction budget. We've got a, you know, engineering budget. It's almost like the first step of a capital improvement project, pro project for that site. We're starting to find what the city wants there. We don't should be some kind of parking. Sam's Way either goes away, it doesn't go away. That's, we're looking like two or three options there. I know my scope with me, but that was what was generally included in it.
It's going to be parking.
Right. And I and I agree with what Scott's saying too. My my only rebuttal to that, and I'm just playing the flip side of the coin on this, is we bought that lot for this. We bought Napa for this. So I would love, I'm just playing the the other side. Is I would love to move forward with it because that's what we initially bought those two pieces of property for. And let's at least get something we like. We can then put it on a shelf and wait or or hopefully look at at some point soon. Some sort of grant goes our way, whether that's an emergency, whether that's EV, whether that's something California Clean Air, whatever, whatever. So that's my, that's my, that's where I'm coming at from is they were bought for this purpose. And let's get a game plan so they're not just sitting there. So.
And I know that you've been meeting with Melissa Raggio, you know, with COG and talking about dollars and and things and who knows, maybe some dollars could float our way for this because we have defined the scope, not the scope of the project. We have defined the use of that property.
I believe so. I believe we have.
So I guess council needs to kind of give direction before I open it. Well, let's, I'll open it up and we'll come back.
And for me, the the Pickle Porch, we did buy that for parking and it is being used. So I think we've met that need. It may not be the gold Cadillac parking we want it to be yet, but in my opinion, we've met that need is what we're doing.
But, you know, like like Chris said, and is Chris still here? You know, you're gonna, you're gonna stripe rock and how much maintenance is going to be involved in maintaining and striping and until this weekend where someone parked because we don't have any signs, I think it's working. You know, I, we talked about it before. People tend to understand how to park in that parking lot. So my biggest fear is blocking the exit. You know, when you go, when you get out of there and and when I talked with Chris and Amy about that. I mean, other, otherwise people seem to be pretty compliant. So and until we do something else with it more permanent, I think it works.
I think it's gotten better since when when Chris first did the work out there. It was a little haphazard where people were parking. It was obstructing the entrances. And then recently I had lunch there and people were pulling and backing their trailers up to the, you know, to the north side. And it was, it was working. It was working well. I would never would have thought to stripe a trailer parking spot the way that they were parked, but it worked. The other, the other thing to keep in mind is where there was discussion of a boundary line adjustment with the adjacent neighbor. I know it was brought up at the last meeting. But one of the things before the council entertains or completes a boundary line adjustment, we want to know if we need four more feet for the parking before we execute a boundary line adjustment. So that that would be an important consideration.
Thank you.
Is that a time sensitive issue?
I don't, I don't, from the conversations last month, I don't believe it is. Because I don't believe the person that was asking for the boundary line adjustment was in a position to pay for it or anything that matters.
Any members of the public? Oh, you want to be public now?
I'll be public and I apologize for asking this now. Original transportation plan is currently, we've got like a July deadline. Does that budget you are asking for cover? You have to do the capital improvement plan cost estimate?
That should be the $10,000.
Okay.
And and
City, city engineering services.
And Erin, you're still working on our traffic mitigation, aren't you? Or is that, is that Erin or is that?
That's part of the same thing. I'm actually working on it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any, any members online? Any members in the public? Hearing none, we'll bring it back for direction.
If you're going to move, it's the adopt the resolution.
Hold on, I get it.
So it's put on there for you. The agenda wasn't reflecting that there's a resolution, so I just want you guys to be aware.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll move that we I don't have a resolution here, but I'll move that we'll, we approve the request to for $24,000 to exclude the Pickle Porch parking.
Perfect. I will second that.
There's been a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Any discussion from our public? Hearing none. Rose?
Vihal.
Aye.
Chirado.
Aye.
Shamenti.
Aye.
Mankada.
Aye.
Brolier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin, for your patience and thanks for showing up tonight.
Yeah, thanks. Have a good night. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to item E, approved purchase of fire department utility vehicle in amount not to exceed $67,000. John.
Can you turn your, just turn the mic off and talk because we're getting a lot of dica.
What?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council, City Administrator staff. I'm here to talk to you about purchasing a utility vehicle for the fire department. It's not to exceed $67,000. This was put in the 2425 budget. It's also in the mid-year budget. And so we'd like to move forward that. I hope you have the staff report. Our current utility vehicle that we're using was bought back in '03 and it's a two-wheel drive vehicle. It's the only other pickup that we have besides the Suburban that I'm driving. And there's multiple uses for the utility vehicle. Biggest for us is when there's local emergencies, anything like that around here, flooding, evacuations, fires. When we have to bring equipment out, instead of having to bring out a large fire truck, we can use a pickup to do that. We also would use it to when we go out and campaign fires to assist the state for alternative funding for us. Commonly have to do crew exchanges at the seven, 14 and 21 day mark. The current vehicle is not really sound enough to do that. It's not very comfortable. Probably wouldn't fit most equipment in it. I think it's very important to have four-wheel drive and especially for anything happens around here. We've had fires off of Finnegan. We've had flooding. We've had snow where we've had trouble getting up certain grades on EMS calls. And it also can be used for multiple other things. As we move forward in operational plans, it can be something that we might want to switch to responding to EMS calls with. Instead of sending a fire engine that gets three miles per gallon, we could send out the new staffing level that we have. We might go to send a pickup truck out with a shell on the back or equipment in there that could go on EMS calls, which would be a cost savings. And there could still be one person back there to drive the fire truck and see if they could beat up if there was a fire. Or in the future, if we decided to move forward with some sort of EMS program in the future for the city, that'd be something that could be readily used for quick response vehicle for paramedic services. So that's about it. It was in the original budget. It was in the mid-year budget. We originally had around $80,000 and that was because there was some discussion about having an EV vehicle to move forward that in the city at a given time. Now, since then, we've we've changed that. And the quotes we've all got is between 49 and 57. Haven't committed to one vehicle yet. I think it's important to get eyes on 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 some of those. We've only been dealing with fleet dealers that will do the same pricing. So that's where we're at. So I'm asking for your approval to do that. And then we would probably sell the the other pickup or see if Chris or anybody else in the city needs that or surplus of that out. So where we're at. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I have a question, John. This is already in the 2425 budget, but it's been approved. Why are we here? Why is he, why is?
I was told that I needed to come here because it needs your approval.
The funds have been appropriated, but we still need to take because it's over $50,000 for the purchase request. For our purchasing.
So we can approve a budget, but then if we actually do it, we have to prove it.
Because it's over. So you're basically signing the purchase order here.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to share.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
So you're at 67 is what your estimate is right now. So you had 80 budgeted.
Yeah, the mass that we would anticipate spending on the vehicle should be around 57.
Yep.
The 10 is for equipment, radios, sirens, label and striping, stuff like that.
And the extra remaining, what are you going to, or is that, where will that go to?
Well, that'd be something I'd have a discussion to show about.
Bottom line.
On how our budget is going. It might be moved to a different lineup.
Is this general funders is measuring?
So this purchase here, it will, so the way that, we have plenty of expense already in their budget to cover measure A, but we spend those dollars first. Then we'll spend TOT and then it would go into general funds. So when I'm filling out the end of the year budget report, like I said, we have plenty of expense in there already to cover our measuring requirements.
Okay. So this will fall under general fund then?
Most likely.
And then on the measure A funds, we have enough set aside to do that 10% over to go 110%, right?
Correct.
So you're going to pull that to save that money for the next budgeting. Okay.
You know, maybe in the, in the staff report, we could just, you know, this goes to Scott's question, the reason why we're seeing it because I I agree with Scott. We, we hire our department chair, our department heads to be managers and I don't want to micromanage. And so if it's in their budget, the expectation is they spend their budget and they monitor their budget. So maybe in the, in the next staff.
Consent, you mean?
No, no, no. But I just think even, I mean, this will, the item could be an action item, but you're bringing it to the council because it exceeds
50,000.
Yeah, the 50,000. So that we know because it does feel like you're coming to mommy and daddy. I agree with that. When the expectation is that you manage your budget.
I'll make a motion to probably.
Well, I have to It's okay. Any public?
No public.
Online, bringing it back. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the fire department utility vehicle for $67,000. Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Rose?
Vihal.
Aye.
Chirado.
Aye.
Shamenti.
Aye.
Mankada.
Aye.
Brolier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Moving on to item F.
Good job.
Yeah, it is the same thing. Approved new vehicle purchase for water, wastewater in an amount not to exceed $69,290 and 10 cents.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am here to ask your permission to move forward with the purchase of a new utility truck to replace our 2010 utility truck that is again broken down. This truck that we have currently, this is the second time that has broken down. The first time it cost over $15,000 to repair. This one's looking to be above $10,000 for the repair on it. So I think at this point, it's just a sinkhole for money. So we need to replace it and move on to the new vehicle.
This was in the budget.
So dealer, okay.
Move on. Let's roll.
Okay, any other public comment? Can anyone online, is there?
I make a motion to approve the new vehicle purchase for water, wastewater in the amount of $69,290 and 10 cents.
Second.
Elizabeth, I'll get it in a lifetime.
Vihal in a second.
Aye.
Chirado.
Aye.
Shamenti.
Aye.
Mankada.
Aye.
Brolier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to know that the fire lasted seven years longer than public works.
The fire one only had like 60,000 miles on it or something. It's pretty low.
Okay. Informational items, item number 11.
None.
Rose? Number 12, administration report.
For the last time that we met, I have pretty much attended meetings and CAG, have met with the county administrator for our regular abandoned vehicle meetings. I've also met with the superintendent and had lunch with her to discuss like, you know, like basically like think that partnerships and stuff that we have and pretty much issues that are happening at the school district that the city would need to know. I have attended a handful of business mixers to let the business community know that the city is, is here. And pretty much that is it.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to item 13, council report. We'll start with Alvin.
I don't know, my brain's a little fried because we had fair week. Fair, the last three weeks feels like. So fair was great. Once again, community support for the fair is absolutely amazing. Just can't say enough about the people that live in our community and the help and support that's out there. Also attended the Fireman's Pancake Breakfast. Once again, those guys hooked up some meat and black tacks. Your husband was amazing back then. The park also looked amazing. I don't know. Job well done to everybody. There's too many people to point and say thank you to, so I'm just saying, job well done to everybody, but where is Amy?
She was.
So Amy was down there digging in the dirt.
She was, on Saturday.
On Saturday, when I went down there to have my breakfast, she was out there digging and I don't know what she was doing, because I had kids and we were trying to get back up, feed and everything, so, but she was actually down there digging in the dirt and.
Yeah, they're moving the dirt away from the.
From the curbs, it looked like?
Yeah, so that when they go to put in, they're gonna do additional dirt for plants, but then they're gonna put bark in there. You can't have the, you can't have the soil all the way up to the concrete and then add bark, so.
So either way, I just started digging and I was like, wow, that's awesome. So I just wanted to do that. That's all I got because we have future agenda items coming up.
I will just echo everything that Alvin said in terms of our community and fair. And thank you, Mike, for attending LaFco for me.
Oh, you're welcome. Oh, boy, that's gonna be a good discussion.
That's it.
So Scott?
Yeah, I attended the fair kickoff dinner, as always, good food, good company. And we had LaFco yesterday. We did an MSR on our cemeteries. And there are about, I want to say seven or eight different special districts for cemeteries. They're all independently run. Altaville and West Point are the two that are running in, in the red. And it's interesting business setup. I'm not sure how they can fix a lot of stuff. The other five are just do what they do. It's very small dollars. And we, there are some suggestions about how to maybe do things a little better administratively, about how to maybe cooperate on websites, trying to get as much cooperation between the districts as possible. They're very, very passionate and they're very, very fierce and protective of themselves. But if they can do something like an administrative co-op, where they can combine some of the administrative work to websites, that kind of thing, and work together on that, they might, they might come out better and actually grow the revenue. It's really hard to contact the cemeteries. It's really hard to get information. How much does it cost? To buy their product is difficult. So we'll see how that goes. That was very interesting. And then also, we talked about, well, what will be one of my future agenda items if Mike doesn't spoil the surprise?
No.
That's it for me.
Okay, then I won't say it.
Took every ounce of control he had.
See, I'm a team player. They also talked about the upcoming reviews that will be done. That spirit, no, the municipal reviews. One's gonna be the City of Angels and the other one's gonna be the.
Veterans.
Thank you, veterans districts. So, and I won't spoil your surprise as long as you're gonna talk about it, because I think we should talk about that. All right. Caroline?
Let's see, went to CAG and Scott was there too. We did a review of the executive director, no, is she the executive director? And then we did approve the, the EV vehicle infrastructure implementation plan as part of the consent agenda, and then there was just some other things. And then for the Calvers Transit, we are putting together an ad hoc building committee on the new transportation building. So just so that it doesn't, not every decision has to come to the main board. They can make some decisions on just carpet colors, things like that. So that's kind of exciting. And then, yep, fair, fair was great. Went to the opening dinner and rodeo and wonderful as always. And the park. Oh, yeah. It made me tear up every time I've driven by last week to see how many children at all times of the day have been enjoying our park and seeing the working out, watching the pickleball players, share the court with the basketball kids and, and people walking the trail and, yeah, so it was fun to be down there for pancake breakfast too.
Can I throw one more thing on the park?
Sure.
Supposedly, and I have, is the fire department played some young kids down there.
Yeah.
Too. There was like a whole.
I saw them.
Yeah, there was a whole thing down there, so it was kinda, yeah.
Yeah, they're encouraged to go down there. The only thing I want to say throughout there is there's a community group that maybe it would be worthwhile putting a shed down there to put some of the equipment in, lock it up at night, but just so that you could have it maybe as a, you know, you could check it out and check it back in. And I know it would be on our system and I know we would have some loss, but it's been successful in other communities to do that. So it's kind of nice.
And then I have, just kind of dovetailing or tagging along with the, with the park. I, I asked, I have a question, Chris. We don't check, we don't lock those bathrooms at 10 o'clock?
No, we have been, the police department's been helping us lock them up in the evenings.
Okay.
Once the sun goes down, the park is supposed to close that sun down.
Okay.
And then my staff opens them up in the morning.
Okay. And then I also talked with Amy because I am a recent convert to bocce ball. Our courts have not been striped and I asked Amy to get ahold of lawyer and, and make sure that they're striped and. So attended the kickoff barbecue. I went to Central Sierra Economic Development, which I will talk about shortly. I did the welcome booth. Marie and I did the welcome booth at the fair. What a great activity. I thanked Martin, even though he beat me jumping the frog. It was such, it was so cool. I asked him to put us down again next year to do that. I attended our police chief's barbecue and I enjoyed that. And we have a new recruit, Andrew, that I did not know until I saw Andrew, who was a former student at Bret Hart. That was very cool. Pancake breakfast, as someone has talked about. And again, I lost, but the, you know, we, we talk every year about, you know, we need to rotate. And when I went to the Central Sierra Economic Development, it was overwhelming.
It was a lot.
It's a lot.
Oh, my gosh!
And the only quarter.
I know. Oh, my gosh. And Ben Stoffer said it was good to see you, Mike, but I can give you, you know, just a quick update. There is the, I don't know if he's the young man that he's, is he a director or he's?
Yes, they hired him.
Some kind of management person?
Aaron.
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 Aaron. Well, he's written a grant and there is gonna be a Sierra Founder's Academy. And he's gonna award five, he's gonna do startup dollars for five local businesses for, for our youth. And I asked if one would be in Calaveras County and, and he says it's gonna be competitive. And then Ben had a lot of questions about the fact that the board was gonna write a letter of support to the governor to participate in the wildfire community resilience pilot program. And, you know, West Point already has one and, you know, Ben's a true advocate of Calaveras County. And so some language will be written in that letter. But I, I found the meeting to be fascinating, but I went, oh, my gosh, it's like, right there. So I, I did enjoy it.
Were you standing in for somebody?
No, it's mine.
Oh, it's yours? Okay. Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't meet that optimism.
It doesn't.
And sometimes they even cancel a meeting, so you're going six months or so.
Right. It, it was, it was pretty interesting.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't, I don't want to walk away thinking that a lot of it, a lot of Twalome, we probably Twalome County benefits more from it because they're located there. But I mean, what is it, like six counties?
Alpine, Mariposa, Calaveras, Twalome.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive. It's pretty impressive. So that is the extent of my report. Thank you, guys, for your patience.
And what's the exciting news, Scott?
And we are on to.
There's no correspondence.
No correspondence.
Next is calendar.
Just wait.
Calendar's up on the CDs for you. The biggest piece that I need to bring up to you is actually next week. So we were going to have a special meeting on the 12th for budget. And we're asking if 1 o'clock works for you to be done by 5 o'clock.
Do you think it's four hours?
For planning commission.
I don't think so. Is one, is one what you said?
Well, any time after.
Oh, any time after.
So we can do two.
On the 12th?
On the 12th. Say two hours is plenty.
I'm open so far.
Yeah?
Works for me.
You? Shamenti?
Yeah, I think so.
Chirado? I, I'm available any time after 11:30.
Okay. Vihil?
I'm checking.
June 12th, I'm fine.
Uh, yeah, I'm available. I've actually extended my trip through the 11, so I'll be home on the 12th.
Oh, perfect. Okay. I'll extend that to the 11. So then we'll say 1 o'clock?
Two.
Let's do two. Two?
Two to four.
Two to four. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll send you an invite, June, just so you have it on your calendar.
Perfect.
Okay? And then here's your June dates.
Yep, yep.
Okay? And we're on the future agenda items.
You want me to go first? For me, future agenda items, I would look into the 218 deadline. When that kind of ends, I would really like to kind of wrap up that Utica five-year plan and see how we could move forward with that. And also, I would love to look into somebody helping with the park. I know that the park is big and beautiful and wonderful, but it also takes a lot of work. So I know Murphy's has a group up there that basically rents it out, does upkeep, beautification, that type of thing. So I think it would relieve a little bit of stress off of our guys, maybe, or maybe work in conjunction. I don't know. But if there's ACBA or the Angels Camp Community Club, I believe, and we'd have to look into this, but I believe the county or that Murphy's district, I think they keep the liability insurance and stuff on it. There's a nominal fee paid by that Murphy's group that does that, keep and trim the hedges and that type of stuff. But then that Murphy's group can rent it out for weddings. They can do whatever. So if they turn a profit, then it's on them. I, I believe that's how it works. I would love to look and do something to help with that.
It's county rent, so they just take it on.
Yes.
As a nonprofit.
I think it's a nonprofit. I think it's how it works and I'm not 100% positive.
So they are in charge of the contracting of renting it and things like farmer's market.
Yep, exactly. The farmer's market. And then, so they get, so, yeah, so.
Chicken in a barrel, all that stuff.
Exactly. All that stuff. And I think, so I would love to kind of look into that unless staff believes that that's not a viable option. But I think some help would be appreciated. So that's my thought.
I would just add that we probably need to check with our army on that too.
Oh, for sure. I'm, I'm just saying, I would love, it's just an idea that it's gonna take some time to put together, but now that the park is getting there, I think that's an option to look into. Or like you said, the shed to rent things out to people, we could, I don't know, just an idea to throw out there and look into.
Like an adopt a park program.
Yeah, I mean, if they want to do little summer concerts and charge $20 a ticket and, you know, however, whatever it works at. But it relieves the stress off of us a little bit since we don't have a park and recs budget. Unless we want to make that up out of thin air somewhere.
And use plane load.
Yeah. So that's all I have for agenda items.
Is it good? And I think I'm good as long as Scott is gonna talk about what we're gonna talk about. Caroline?
I wanted to just work with our administrator to see what we can start working with economic development and see some agenda items on that.
I don't know if this will be an agenda item or not, but I'd like to clarify when a roll call vote is required and when to just say aye or nay. And then, secondly, I would support adding a public works personnel worker that understands road machines, if they end up with road maintenance done. I think we've been kicking that can down the road far enough. Maybe take some kind of action that actually is a step forward. And then finally, we have, you know, through LaFco, we have the opportunity and we should take the opportunity to annex what is determined low hanging fruit. City, properties that city owns that are outside our limits. The water treatment plants, both of them. Compendio Park. And I don't know if the spray field fits into that, but, and then, and then where, where citizens want to give a property, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I understand maybe the Tryon property's in play. Some easy annexations so that we can see the process and give it a try. And I'd like to see that agendaized as soon as we can. The county is open to working with us on that.
I agree.
And Amanda Follendorf is gonna help us put together a list that she has in mind of different ATNs so we can work toward that. And I guess, is that what you want?
Yeah. You know, the supervisor, Jared, I don't know his name, from Twalome County, Chris.
He's running, yeah.
Who's running? Yes.
State senator.
State senator. They actually went out and they bought a chip sealing machine. And he's looking for partners to maybe be trained on that machine and I, I, I mean, in my mind, he was talking about, you know, for chip sealing, we'd send two guys over there to help them chip seal. When we chip seal, they'd send two guys over to us, but, but it may be something that you want to explore. I'm not sure where they are with that. That's just, that's just one supervisor. I'm not sure the other four are on board with what direction he's gonna go, but something like that is, I think, something to look at.
I'm looking at options.
We actually talked about a little today. One idea is when we have, and all the new meters are in, our meter readers are going out there and they go a couple blocks, they stop, they take their readings, go a couple blocks, stop. They can also be analyzing the roads and categorizing the roads at the same time so we can.
Multitask.
The road assessment's already done. It's just now putting it in priority, what comes first. And that's what the engineer and I are working on.
To bring to us.
I just want to make sure that when you said all the, it's all been logged in the priority, it's just like Vallecita Road this last winter took a beating and I don't think it's gonna be on your list as a priority. So.
No, I mean, it needs that.
Yeah, that's a new, those are all new potholes the size of my Fiat, so.
So do you have a timeframe and when we'll see some, some report with like colors and greens and reds and yellows and?
Ms. Erin and I discussed it. It sounds like getting through everything that we've gotta look at. It should be, I'm hoping by the first of the fiscal year. I think that's what he said, so.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, we are currently working on it. It just, like I said, we got handed a bunch of information that made zero sense and we've been picking our way through it ever, ever since we got it, so.
Thanks for the speed bumps. It was interesting driving my life clock trailer Rover those today. But they're well placed.
And the Scott authorization thing, we did look into a few years back, annexing all the way out to the K-8 grounds out there, because that gentleman runs his own sewer treatment plant and he does not want to do it anymore and he would love to tie into us. We looked into going down past Spence. We looked into going up past Tryon. And the ball kind of started rolling and it kind of died, so.
I think we need to go in smaller increments, do what we can.
Take some baby steps.
Could be, yeah. There may be information out there, but yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think it's absolutely wonderful. I think it's absolutely wonderful.
And you know what? I mean, we got the impression that there was some kind of communication breakdown or something that, you know, why did it get stalled in the middle?
I can explain offline.
Okay, well, that's fine. But I mean, a lot of it has to do with tax... With the taxation base, tax base, and sharing and things like that. But it seems like things you could have gotten through. So it'd be interesting to start exploring that again. I agree. Okay, so that's enough. Any other future agenda items from our audience? Anyone online, Rose? I think the roll call vote, guys, help me, is due because we're still online. Is that why we have to do roll call?
It's in your handbook. You guys wrote it in your handbook.